Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. Who knew it would be this cold on a January night, huh? Anyway, welcome to the city’s first meeting of the year, the organization meeting of the City of Summit. We will start first by calling our role. Mr. Boyer.
President.
Ms. Hamlet.
President.
Mr. McTiernan.
President.
Mr. Pulaski.
Here.
Mr. Smallwood.
Here.
Would everyone rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we’ll open our meeting with our invocation, who tonight will be given by Monsignor Robert Meyer of St. Teresa’s Parish. Thank you, Monsignor. Yes, you can use the other mic if that’s more comfortable. You can just turn it for yourself.
Last thing we need is for the priests to break the mic. Good and gracious God, you guide everything in wisdom and love, accept the prayers we offer today for our Summit community. In your goodness, watch over those elected and in authority so that all people may enjoy freedom, security, and peace. Give our civic leaders inspiration, courage, joy, and strength to meet the needs of this community. And help us, one and all, to display courage, hope, generosity, and kindness so that we may honor others. In the way we honor others, we may inspire those around us. May our lives, mark our lives with strength to support worthy causes, with integrity to seek the truth, and in all things be our inspiration and guide. We make this prayer to you, O God, both now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Monsignor. Okay, we’re going to open the evening by swearing in our two newest elected, newly-elected councilmembers. So with that, I will ask Michelle Calmenson, who will be sworn in as councilmember in the First Ward. Will Ms. Calmenson come up, please, with her husband, Miles, and whoever else she wishes?
I, Michelle Calmenson, do solemnly swear.
I, Michelle Calmenson, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of Councilmember, Ward One.
Of Councilmember, Ward One.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Calmenson, please take your seat at the dais. And there you go, over here. Our next newly-elected person is Councilwoman in the Second Ward, Claire Toth. And whoever else you wish.
Had I looked at the Bible, I would have known. There’s a special one. It has her name on it. I, Claire E. Toth, do solemnly swear.
I, Claire E. Toth, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of Councilmember, Ward Two.
Of Councilmember, Ward Two.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Catholic school, here’s a Catholic school.
Okay, Councilmember Toth, will you please take your seat at the dais?
Thank you very much.
Okay, now that we’ve got everybody in a full seat, full house here, our first order of business will be to select our council president, President of the Common Council for the year of 2025. Nominations are now in order.
I’d like to nominate Councilmember McTiernan.
Second.
Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Council President, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you all for your support. I hope I deserve it. So, thank you. All right, and welcome, everyone. This is a really joyous occasion. It’s a great way to start the year where we have new faces, new possibilities, new things that we’re going to do, and it’s just a wonderful way to celebrate our community, our elected officials, our new elected officials, and our volunteers that make up what I believe is one of the pillars of our community, the people who give of themselves to make our community better. So, welcome, everyone.
Should I recognize the people? Or do council?
No, do council pro temp first, and then we’ll do that.
Yeah, so you can tell who really runs everything here. So, at this time, our next order of business is to elect our president pro temp, who will act as President of the Common Council in my absence and as mayor in our mayor’s absence. Nominations are now in order. I’d like to start the nominations and nominate Councilwoman Delia Hamlet.
Second.
Do I hear any other nominations? Okay, hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, before we get to certificates of appreciation, I just want to say a thank you to everyone, as I mentioned, who’s come here. But we do have some dignitaries I’d like to point out that are here. First off, I’d like to thank our Honorable Assemblywoman Nancy Munoz for being here. We have our former mayor, Noradis. Thank you, Noradis. Former Councilman Dave Baumgarts, taught me a lot, he’s here. Let’s see, Councilwoman Marjorie Fox, you’re here somewhere. There you are. We have a couple who we’re going to honor a little bit later. I’m going to skip over. We’ll get to them later. But we also have Republican Chair Nick Coriel is here. And then, as well, Father Bob obviously did a great job with our invocation, so thank you for coming. And we also have the Reverend Dr. Harriel, so thank you for coming as well. And then, last but not least, our superintendent of our wonderful school system is here also, Scott Hawke. I’m hoping I’m not missing anybody. So with that, we’re going to, Madam Mayor, I understand you have some certificates of appreciation.
I do, as a matter of fact. Should have worn my running shoes tonight. First, I would like to thank you all for, this is our quartet that was playing in the lobby for our reception. There’s Summit High School team. So we have certificates of recognition and lattes on the house. First, we have Isabella Kim. And Emma Vacho. And Liv G. And Julia Maecher. Without their conductor, they’d probably still be pretty fabulous, but. Nevna Bojovic.
Very close.
Hope we see you next year.
Madam Mayor, why don’t you stay up there? This is always a highlight, highlight of the year for, I think, for our community, which is our, Mayor Fagan is going to address the city with her State of the City address.
All right. Good evening, Summit. It is an honor to be here tonight as we reflect on the past year and look forward to the future of Summit in 2025. First, congratulations and welcome to our incoming councilmembers, Michelle Calmenson and Claire Toth. I’m excited to work alongside you as we continue to serve and uplift our city and its residents. I would also like to extend a heartfelt thank you to our outgoing councilmembers, Andy Miniger, who served for three years, and Greg Vartan, who served for six, including a year as council president. Your dedication has made Summit a better place. I’d also like to recognize Lisa Allen for her exceptional service as both councilmember and council president. It has been a pleasure working with each of you, and I am really grateful for your valuable insights, leadership, and service. As I reflect on my first year as mayor, I am both proud of what we have accomplished and eager for what lies ahead. Over the past year, we have tackled significant challenges, but we have also celebrated meaningful wins. Summit is a vibrant community, and that is thanks to the collective efforts of our city staff, elected officials, volunteers, and residents, all working together to make Summit a better place to work and live. And I look forward to continuing these efforts into 2025. Our 2023 election demonstrated that voters overwhelmingly felt that Summit faced significant safety, overdevelopment, and quality of life issues. Beginning at our first meeting in 2024, your elected officials acted swiftly to address each of these bipartisan concerns, among other challenges. Ensuring the safety and well-being of Summit’s residents is my highest priority. This year, we have made notable strides in enhancing our public safety efforts, beginning with the Resident Protection Ordinance. This initiative strengthens protections for residents and provides additional resources to combat local crimes, such as motor vehicle theft and burglary. God bless you. We have also expanded our police department’s table of organization by adding two new officers to our team. This strategic enhancement reinforces our commitment to maintaining safe, well-patrolled neighborhoods and ensuring the security of our community. These efforts are making an impact. Police Chief Zagorski’s end-of-the-year report, available on our website, shows a reduction in overall crime in 2024 with a particular decline in property crime, one of the top concerns for our residents. Downtown parking is also a top concern. Increased enforcement improves parking availability and quality of life for our residents and for our businesses. With our new Director of Parking, who was promoted from within the city, we have increased parking enforcement. Additionally, the Summit Police Department issued double the number of parking summonses in 2024 compared to 2023. But there’s more work ahead. This year, we will focus on improving parking, driving, and pedestrian safety, including addressing the rising concern around e-bikes and e-scooters. We are looking to other cities that have successfully implemented safety measures to protect both riders and pedestrians. And as a physician, I urge everyone to remember that helmets are not just for kids. Wearing one is the best way to protect yourself when riding a bike, a scooter, or any other open-air transportation. Consistent with our focus on safety and quality of life, our ongoing work to address homelessness continues to make a noticeable difference for our visitors and our residents. By partnering with local organizations, the Mayor’s Task Force on Homelessness has helped eight individuals experiencing homelessness find housing, employment, and access to rehabilitation care. We remain committed to providing stable housing solutions and supporting those in need. Summit is a wonderful shopping and dining destination, and we are committed to ensuring that everyone who visits or spends time downtown feels safe and welcome. Engagement and transparency are cornerstones of this administration. When residents are informed and involved, our community thrives. In 2025, we will continue to prioritize accessibility and open communication. Whether addressing issues like flooding or noise in your neighborhood or walking through areas like the Salt Brook to hear your concerns directly, we remain committed to a hands-on approach. I am available to meet with you at your convenience, and I encourage you to reach out to me or contact the city clerk to schedule a time to discuss your concerns. We’re also working hard to keep you informed. Every two weeks, our police department publishes the police blotter, offering important safety, public safety updates. In addition, we provide several notification systems, including Nixle and Smart 911, that keep you updated on everything from emergency alerts to community news. I encourage everyone to sign up on our website to stay connected. We are active on social media as well, with live-streamed meetings on your YouTube channel and daily posts on Facebook, including a Mondays with the Mayor segment and a recently-initiated weekly neighborhood news update for busier residents. And later this year, we’ll be introducing a digital newsletter to delve deeper into key city issues and initiatives. Through town halls, listening sessions, and one-on-one meetings, we are ensuring that our residents are informed and involved in the decisions that shape the city. When it comes to excellence, I am fully dedicated to ensuring that our public schools rank among the top in the state. Achieving this means collaborating closely with our school board to strengthen policies around core subjects, particularly in STEAM, to maintain our academic competitiveness. It is equally vital that we keep parents informed and actively engaged in their children’s education. By fostering a culture of teamwork and transparency, we can build lasting trust with families, retain students in our public schools, and continue to raise the bar for educational excellence. The recent construction of state-of-the-art STEAM facilities across all schools in the district underscores the Board of Education’s commitment to enhancing the academic experience at every grade level. Likewise, the new turf at the Lower High School field, along with proposed improvements to Anderson’s Fieldhouse, reflect our ongoing dedication to extracurricular excellence. Ultimately, shaping a budget and policies that not only preserve our exceptional academic and extracurricular programs, but actively improve them is a fundamental responsibility of the Board of Education. We continue to invest in our playgrounds and public spaces, creating environments that are safe and welcoming for all community members. I’m excited to announce that MBE Playground is ready to go out to bid, and we hope to have it completed by the summer. Thanks to careful budgeting, grants, and community support, we will soon have Summit’s first ADA-accessible, sensory-friendly, and intergenerational playground, designed to serve everyone in our community. Thank you to the Department of Community Program staff and the Advisory Board members for engaging neighbors and residents and incorporating their input into the final design. One of our major goals for 2025 is to work with Union County to ensure the completion of the long-awaited Bryant Pond renovation. The county is committed to finishing the project, and we are eager to see this important space revitalized. In fact, I received an update just a couple of days ago from the county stating that they will go out to bid tomorrow and expect to award a bid in this quarter. The Parkline Project is also positioning Summit as a leader in protecting, beautifying, and enhancing our environment. Through close collaboration with the Parkline Foundation and adjacent neighbors, we will continue to create this beautiful linear pedestrian park along the abandoned railroad. On June 14th, we will hold three sessions here in the council chamber to gather residents’ feedback on the tatlock lighting proposal. It is by working together that we make our city shine. That is why we are working hard to ensure frequent dialogue with our residents regarding the issues you care about. I encourage you to attend that meeting and share your thoughts with us during one of those evening sessions. I’m also proud to announce the successful completion of our first year of Mayor’s Wellness Campaign. This initiative not only promotes healthy habits, but also focuses on creating safer environments for outdoor activities like walking and biking. In September, we hosted our Bike and Pedestrian Safety Rodeo in partnership with Avenues in Motion. Residents had the opportunity to get their bikes adjusted for no cost and receive free helmets if needed, while also learning important safety rules around through an engaging, challenging, challenge course. Additionally, the Wellness Campaign has teamed up with the Wait Until 8th Movement, which encourages limiting social media and device use until at least 8th grade. I will continue to promote wellness year-round, making our community healthier and safer for all. As Summit grows, we remain committed to responsible development that serves the community’s best interests. In 2024, we took significant steps with the creation of the Morris Broad Crossroads Overlay Zone, a strategic zoning change designed to ensure Summit receives the highest and best use of key properties, such as the old firehouse, the Chestnut Street parking lot, and Seven Cedar Street. This zoning allows for creative, correctly scaled development to potentially include housing, both market and affordable units, and retail space, while maintaining the character and values of our community, ensuring we preserve open space and enhance quality of life. Responsible growth also means utilizing resources to address issues as they arise. Our Department of Community Services, which oversees our trash and recycling services, the transfer station, and our CCLIC Fix Service, responded to over 4,000 tickets submitted this year. Thank you to our community for alerting us when you have an issue. Our transfer station continues to be a crown jewel of the community with the Summit Free Market, which keeps gently-used items in circulation, and our recycling center, which keeps recyclable items out of the landfill. The total amount of materials recycled in 2024 at the transfer station was more than 343 tons. Affordable housing remains a priority in Summit, and in 2025, we will continue to advance creative, thoughtful solutions that reflect the needs of our community. Collaboration with local nonprofits, landlords, and organizations such as Our House will remain at the heart of our strategy. By utilizing affordable housing trust funds, we are focused on improving existing properties, including a group home currently owned by Our House, while also fostering the development of new housing opportunities to serve our residents. Summit’s diverse character is one of our greatest strengths, and we are committed to maintaining that while addressing the growing need for affordable housing. Unlike the overdevelopment seen in some neighboring communities, Summit is dedicated to responsible growth that preserves the integrity of our infrastructure and our neighborhoods. Rather than concentrating large, all-affordable housing units in one location, we are committed to an approach that was first set in motion a decade ago that distributes affordable units across the city, incorporating them into the fabric of our community rather than concentrating affordable housing in solitary locations. In 2025, this balanced, sustainable approach will help ensure that Summit continues to be a welcoming, thriving community for all while addressing our affordable housing objectives. One of the most visible accomplishments this year was the completion of the new firehouse, which also serves as an emergency operations center. This facility is critical, especially with Summit’s unique location, flanked by two major highways and serving our daily population and our 24-hour employers, like Overlook and Bristol Myers Squibb, and soon to Be Canview as well. It is vital that we are prepared for any situation 24/7. The new building includes a decontamination area designed to protect our firefighters from the long-term health risks they face, particularly exposure to harmful chemicals. This ensures they can continue to serve our community with excellence for years to come. As we enter 2025, is that my buzzer up? As we enter 2025, there is a renewed sense of optimism across our community. We are excited about the progress we’ve made and are committed to building on that momentum. Working with Summit Downtown, Inc., we plan to make our downtown even more vibrant with improvements like a new permanent fence and enhanced landscaping near the farmer’s market. At City Hall, we are fostering a positive work environment and promoting internal talent. To that end, this evening, we will be proud to appoint our CFO, Tammy Baldwin, as city administrator. Tammy. Tammy, whose great-great-grandfather George Baldwin was Summit’s second mayor, is an outstanding leader, and we are thrilled to have her in this important role. We have welcomed new team members, including our new Chief Communications Officer, ensuring that we continue to choose the best for Summit’s future. Numerous candidates sought these and other positions with the city, giving us the opportunity to select the very best fit for our city. Summit continues to be a place, not only where people want to live, but also to work and to serve. Thank you, Summit, for being a part of this journey. Thank you to all the volunteers, both retiring and currently serving on our many boards and committees. Without you, Summit would not be the incredibly special place we call home. Please make use of the many resources the city provides to keep you informed. This speech, along with links to corresponding data, will be posted on our website. There, you can also find ample information on many city services. And as always, our doors are open for you to come so we can listen to your comments and your concerns. We are proud of what we have accomplished so far, from strengthening public safety to fostering responsible development to addressing affordable housing. And as we kick off 2025, we are filled with excitement about what lies ahead. Together, we will continue to build a summit that is safe, thriving, and full of promise for the future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for that wonderful update on the state of the city. At this time, I’m going to throw, call an audible, and we are going to have what has always been a favorite of mine in council meetings, which is a historical minute. And Councilman Pulaski has graciously offered to give one today.
Well, so hopefully all, hopefully not all of you heard the historic minute from October 22nd, but we thought it was appropriate to do it again here tonight. Done to a T, that is the condition of our bread. There is no soggyness from insufficient baking nor lack of nourishing qualities through too much baking. Summit Bakery uses material of the fine quality and offers customers bread, rolls, and biscuits of the most delicious flavor and high grade. Another ad of the time for the Summit. Another ad of the time for the Summit Bakery states, "Our bread will be delivered to residents at any time desired. We make all kinds that's good." The Summit Record Newspaper published these advertisements in 1902 for George W. Baldwin and Sons Bake Shop, which was located at 466 Springfield Avenue with the telephone number 123. Who was George W. Baldwin? At the time of the ad, he was our mayor, the second mayor of Summit. He held that post for two years, which was the term back then. A Democrat, Baldwin also had been a member of the first Summit Council in 1899, living on Elm Street and representing Ward 2. The first ordinance introduced and passed at Baldwin's and THE first common council meeting, held on April 22nd, 1899, provided that the mayor and common council, quote, "would serve without pay." That's still in the books today, and I haven't ever gotten paid. I don't know what it is. In 1915, President Woodrow Wilson appointed George Baldwin as Summit's postmaster, an esteemed knight and founding member of the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks Lodge Number 1246. In 1931, George Baldwin and his family have been fixtures in Summit for over 150 years. Take a tour of the property maps around City Hall, and you'll see no shortage of Baldwins. George Baldwin begat Clinton Baldwin, Clinton Baldwin begat Ralph Baldwin, Ralph Baldwin begat Harry Baldwin, and Harry Baldwin begat our esteemed CFO and city administrator, Tammy Baldwin.
That's awesome. Thank you, Councilman Palowski. It's nice to, and thank you for all the Baldwins for adding to the rich tapestry that is Summit's history. Okay, we're on to our ceremonial awards. Go down here?
Yes.
All right, we have a couple of awards for some of our retiring council people. So this is a kind of, it's happy, but it's a little sad, but I know they're probably very happy. But it's sad for us because it was such a nice thing to work with these people. I'm going to start off with the longest-serving councilperson. I know I said a lot of things about him in December, but my friend Greg Vartan, who served as a councilperson in Ward 2 for six years. Greg came on the council when I was on it, and I really enjoyed his enthusiasm, his love for Summit, and his really desire to work really, really hard, and none of that changed in the six years that he served this community. So with that, Greg, we'd like to present you with your very own city.
I hate public speaking, but if you have to twist my arm about it. Good evening, and thank you very much. I had the honor and pleasure of serving this place and these people I love so much as a member of council for six years, two full terms and a full year as council president. I took time at the end of the last business meeting in December to say just about everything I wanted to say about all that I am proud to have accomplished and where I think we go from here. The one part I'll repeat because it can't be said enough is thank you. Three groups to thank. First, my family, my incredible wife, Megan, my parents, who are here today, without whose support my service would not have been possible. Next, the city staff, led by the amazing, amazing Tammy Baldwin. Those who are here and those who are not here but who leave a wonderful legacy, who serve with the utmost professionalism and grace. Finally, to all of you, the people of this wonderful community who understand the power of our voice and the value of our vote. It has been the greatest honor of my life serving you, and I wish you the very best to our elected officials, their families, the staff, and indeed the community as we begin another year. Thank you very much.
Next up, I'd like to recognize retiring councilmember Andy Miniger. So Andy served on council for three years, representing Ward 1. I did not know Andy pretty much at all. Our paths didn't cross while I was on council and then he ran, but I will say, one of the huge benefits of volunteering or run for office or to serve the city is you get to know wonderful people. And I had the real distinct pleasure to really get to know Andy over the last several months, and it's to my benefit because he's just a wonderful guy, comes in with a great attitude every day, cares so much about the city, it shines through. His comments were so thoughtful, I learned a lot just listening to him, and I'm going to miss his service on council. So with that, Andy, you, door number two.
I promised Council President McTernan that I would keep this under 15 seconds, so I intend to keep that promise. This has been an amazing honor. Thank you, City of Summit. Thank you so much.
All right. The last person I'd like to recognize here tonight is former councilwoman and president, Lisa Allen. It's odd, my journey as a, I'll call it a politician in Summit, actually began with Lisa. Someone said, "Would you consider running for council?" I go, "I have no idea what that means." This was a dozen years ago, maybe, something like that? And the first person I met was Lisa because she was chair of the Republican City Committee at the time. And I sat down, I'm like, wow, who is this person? She's got energy, she cares, she's a really good salesperson, because I went in saying, "This is not for me." And she convinced me to throw my hat in the ring, and I'm really, really happy that she did. Fast forward, Lisa ran herself, and you know, she just lights up a room when she's in it. You can tell she's sincere, she cares, and it's been a pleasure to watch her serve the city. She was a lonely voice for a couple of years, but she was a strong voice, and she never shied away from making her opinions known in a very intelligent, thoughtful way, and the city is grateful for that. So with that, I'd like to present another map to retiring councilperson Lisa Allen.
Do I have three minutes?
Yes.
I have one more present for you. No, you get your own inscribed gavel.
Oh, oh, yay!
Yeah, so Pat, you're in trouble.
Can I use that?
No, no, this is it, what you're at.
Okay. All right. So I had to redline a very long speech, so I will keep this under two minutes because I've often been told to keep it short. I really want to thank you for this incredible honor tonight. Thank you for the reminder, Mike. I forgot that your political career started with me.
Oh, it's seared in my memory.
Yeah. And it is a fitting night tonight, so thank you for honoring me. My grandmother Josephine always used to say, "God gave us two ears and one mouth for a reason." Her words informed my view on public service, to listen, to really listen more than I speak. Serving a city of 23,000 people is a profound responsibility and a lifelong gift for personal growth. The greatest gift of public service is the opportunity to connect with people from all walks of life, learning from those who are both similar and different. Serving others, especially those facing challenges beyond our own experience, reminds us that the struggles of one person can eventually touch an entire community. Whether it was improving infrastructure or addressing serious community issues, how we treat each other, while addressing those issues determines if we rise or fall together. Grandma Josephine also taught me that when one speaks, do so with humility, empathy, and patience. These are not just words, they are traits that support good governance, and they are essential for progress. Strong communities are built on more than civility. They are built on accountability, and leaders who are those, leaders are those who take responsibility for their words, their actions, and their impacts, as I learned firsthand. As council president, I enjoyed hearing, learning, and learning from all people. It's not always easy, and no one does it perfectly, but I believe it's important not to vilify our neighbors and our friends with whom we disagree, and in a small community, at all costs, we should avoid retreating to our echo chamber. Every one of us plays a role in making Summit better on every single day, and that's why every single person is in this room tonight. It's all up to us to ensure that the community we build and support reflects the very best of who we are, and when we debate the issues, we focus most on respect and accountability. A special thank you to my husband, Pat, and my kids, Zach and Trevor. Their unwavering support made my nearly three and a half years on council possible. Thank you to the entire city of Summit staff. The residents are incredibly lucky to have you. Congratulations, Business Administrator Baldwin. We don't even know how hard our city staff works and EMS, so thank you to all of them. To every friend, resident, Summit volunteer, and community member, as the mayor said, Summit is, it runs on volunteers. I appreciate everyone who cheered me on, offered advice, asked for help. I want to thank you all for allowing me to serve you. And finally, to the new councilmembers, I would really like to congratulate you on your win. Councilwoman Cammelson and Councilwoman Toth. Congratulations on your win. I wish your colleagues and council president best of luck as you all work together to make Summit a place where respect, empathy, and accountability are more than just words. They are the foundation of everything you do. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everyone. All right. At this time, I'm going to ask our Madam Mayor to come to the podium again, and with a very, very special award, this award, I think, started at, was it, Nora, we began this, right? Like, was it seven or eight years ago?
Right, the Tom Award.
Yeah, and it's a wonderful tradition, and Madam Mayor is going to announce our Volunteer of the Year.
It's going to be hard for me. I may choke up on this one. It is an honor to present the Volunteer of the Year Award to my friend Leah Griffith, a remarkable individual whose dedication to our community knows no bounds. Leah has selflessly given so much of herself, leaving an indelible mark on all of us. As chair of the Mayor's Task Force on Homelessness and president of the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad, Leah's leadership has been instrumental in shaping our community's response to some of its most pressing challenges. Her work with the Summit Foundation, where she served as grants chair and a board member, and her tireless commitment to family promise since 2005, culminating in her role as National Board Chair, has transformed countless lives. But Leah's contributions go far beyond volunteerism. She is a true leader who makes things happen. Leah embodies what it means to not just live in a community, but to actively shape it, to not just see problems, but to roll up her sleeves and work relentlessly to solve them. And if that weren't enough, Leah is a devoted wife and mother of four incredible children, and she has been there for each of them at every turn, giving her time and energy to their school's PTOs and ensuring that both their needs and the needs of others are met with care and compassion. Leah, Summit is incredibly fortunate to have you as part of our community. Your selflessness and commitment to helping others makes this town a better place every single day. Thank you for everything you do. You inspire us all. Please come forward.
I really thought I was going to get through that without crying. I was really, really close. I'm going to read what the certificate says, because it also sort of tells you why you're getting this award. This is the City of Summit 2025 Volunteer of the Year Award, awarded to Leah Griffith. In recognition of your exceptional contributions as a dedicated community leader and visionary, we commend your outstanding ability to connect with people from all walks of life, always with respect and compassion. Your skill in both listening and speaking has profoundly enriched our community. We are grateful for your generosity, the countless hours you've dedicated, and for being a true embodiment of volunteerism and service.
First of all, I just want to say thank you, and I'm very humbled because as we, everyone in this room knows, Summit is a special place, and there are so many incredible volunteers in this community, so I'm really, really honored. Summit is special, and Summit doesn't just happen, it happens because of leadership and because of all of you who commit your time and energy, so thank you to everything that everyone in this room does. Thank you.
Before we're going to recognize retiring volunteers, there are seats available in here if anyone wants to come in. If you're standing out there, come on in. There's plenty of room.
There are seats over here to the left here in the front row here.
Yes, sir.
All right. You announce the names, I'll hand the hardware.
All right. Sounds like a plan. I think we're a good team. This is our opportunity to thank our volunteers who have volunteered on our boards and committees who are retiring from their boards or committee positions. So first, Michael Cologne from the Board of Education. I don't think I saw Michael. Jody Campbell from our Mayor's Task Force on Homelessness. Rick Bell from our Planning Board and the Environmental Commission as the Planning Board Representative. Brian O'Donnell from the PAL. I know I saw Brian. Did he leave? His kids were here. Okay, nuts. David Fosgate from the PAL. Stacy Donk.
It's David's birthday, too.
Oh, happy birthday, David. I did not know that. 29.
Twenty-nine again. And Stacy Donk, please come forward. If you're here, I should have said that. If you're here, please come forward to receive your hardware, as Mike called it. Stacy was the fearless leader of the PAL. Imagine running that show. She did an excellent job. And Josh Reimold, also PAL. All right. Sheila Schrere from Summit Public Art. Lauren Holt, also Summit Public Art. Elaine Anderson from Community Programs Advisory Board. Carrie Baker-Rolf from the Community Programs Advisory Board. And Dr. Rich Berardi from the Board of Health. I know he's not here tonight, so. Then it's your turn unless you want me to keep reading.
All right. So these were council appointments, and these people have retired as of December. Melissa Phillips from the Summit Economic Development Board. All right. From the Free Market Steering Committee. Kate Witcher. I'd like to recognize Esther Ellis from the, retiring from the Housing Authority. Also, I'd like to thank Dory Gagnon, retiring from the Summit Parking Advisory Committee. Don't see Dory. Retiring from the Park Line Steering Committee, Philip Techen. And then finally, retiring from the Zoning Board, which can't keep away, is Claire Toth. So thank you, Claire. And that's our retirees. I did forget one thing while mentioning Claire. Claire, obviously incredibly accomplished woman that we're happy to have her serve, supported by her husband, David. It's David's birthday, too. So, thank you, David. All right. At this time, I'd like to make our, an announcement of our 2025 appointments. Council appoints people to all our committees, the mayor appoints people to committees. There's a, it's a volunteer process. People ask to be on committees. They're vetted, talk about it, and we're so happy that we have so many people who are willing to serve our community. So I'm making an appointment for our council standing committees and board liaisons. These are in our council packet. I'm not going to go through all of them. They'll all also be posted on our city website. We will officially put them on their boards as part of our consent agenda a little later in the meeting.
I'm also going to not bore you with everybody's name, but I do want to say thank you to those who have stepped up and volunteered and raised their hand to continue to make this place a wonderful place to live.
Thank you. Okay.
Do you want to announce the standing committees?
Yes, that's, I do want to announce the standing committees. So, as part of our job up here as, as council people, we work with our incredible city staff in order to make our town work as well as it does, and we're, we're lucky to have the city staff that, that we do. As part of that, we have six standing committees that two council people each are part of. Everyone up here, except for me, is a chair of one of those committees, and I'm just going to announce those committees now. So our Administrative Policies and Community Relations Committee is chaired by Councilwoman Cammelson and seconded by Councilwoman Hamlet. Our Capital Projects and Community Services Committee is chaired by Councilwoman Hamlet as well, and seconded by Councilman Boyer. Our Community Programs and Parking Services Committee is chaired by Councilman Smallwood and seconded and by Councilman Palowski. Our Finance Committee is chaired by Councilwoman Toth and seconded by Councilman Smallwood. I also go to those committee meetings. I do something.
You get all the glory.
Our Law and Labor Committee is chaired by Councilman Palowski and seconded by Councilwoman Toth. And then finally, last but not least, our Safety and Health Committee chaired by Councilman Boyer and seconded by Councilwoman Cammelson. And those are our standing council committee assignments for this year, 2025. So thank you all for doing that. Okay. Now we're on to the business part of our meeting. We'll, we'll keep this part short and sweet, I hope. We do have an ordinance for introduction today, and taking us out with this doesn't get any rest for the weary. Councilwoman Toth, please introduce this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. I'm happy to introduce Ordinance 11701. The title is longer than the body. It, it is an ordinance to amend the ordinance titled, "An Ordinance to Establish the 2024 Salaries, Wages, or Compensations of and for the Officers and Employees of the City of Summit in the County of Union and the State of New Jersey." And this ordinance adds the position of Finance Director to the list of salaries, recognizing that, that our business administrator is going to continue wearing the CFO hat, but somebody needs to do the work.
So, are you making a motion to?
Yes, yes. I would like to move, I, excuse me, I move to introduce this ordinance.
Excellent. Excellent. All right. You don't have comments.
You can open it to council, but the hearing will be for the public.
Right. So we'll have the hearing, the hearing dates will be January 21st on this, where people from the public can weigh in. Are there any comments from council at this time? All right. Hearing done. We'll have a roll call.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Cammelson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. At this time, we're on to our consent agenda. I'm going to pull Consent Agenda Law and Labor Number One. We're going to vote on that separately, and then we will do the rest of the consent agenda as a package. So, so at this time, I guess if I'm pulling it, Councilman Palowski, would you introduce Law and Labor Number One on the consent agenda?
Sure. This is Resolution ID Number 11685 to appoint city administrator. We discussed it already a little bit tonight. Very happy and proud to promote Tammy Baldwin, I hope, to the city administrator, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I happily second.
All right. At this time, do I have any comments from the public? Comments from council? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tammy, would you like to say a few words in your new role as city administrator?
I would. Thank you, Council President. If you'll indulge me, this is a very big moment in my professional career, and it's an exciting opportunity, and I do think it's worthy and deserving of me addressing for just a few moments. First and foremost, thanks be to God, without whose guidance and plans for me, I would not be sitting here today. Thank you to Mayor Fagan, Council President McTernan, and all the members of common council, including the outgoing members, for your vote of confidence. I appreciate that. Your confidence in appointing me into this role, and I promise to work hard every day so that I can affirm your decision and make it one that you all can be proud of. A special thank you to my colleagues and my coworkers here in the city. Special shout out to my finance team. Your support and your words of encouragement mean the world to me, and I look forward to serving all of you in this new role and in doing all I can to assist you in continuing to do the great work that you all do for the City of Summit. I have had the good fortune over the last 24 years during my career of working with intelligent, thoughtful, inspiring, supportive, challenging, and sometimes demanding business administrators, coworkers, colleagues, professionals, and elected officials, some of whom are in this audience tonight and on this dais. It occurred to me that there are four council people here from when I was appointed as the CFO in 2019. Councilwoman Marjorie Fox, Mayor Radis, Councilman Barton was here, and, and Council President McTernan were all here. So it's really nice that you all are here today when this is happening. I have learned a lot from all of you, and I thank you for that. A heartfelt thanks to the first business administrator that I ever worked for, a man by the name of Frank Bradley, who believed in me. I might tear up. He's not with us today, but he told me that I should pursue my MPA amongst many other CFO, CPM, all these certifications, and he thought that someday I'd make a great administrator. I follow all of his, his advice. I'm here today, and I think he's smiling down from up above. One of the most awesome parts of this appointment is that I get to do it here in Summit. I was born and raised here. I went to Lincoln School and Jefferson School and the junior high school, long before it was called the middle school, but after it was called the high school, just to be clear. I went to the community center when it was known as the Edison Rec Center and took tap and ballet and roller skating and all of that. Both of my parents were born and raised here, and several of my lifelong friends are from this city. My great-great-grandfather was the second mayor of Summit. I come from a long line of public servants. There are state, county, and local elected officials in my family. There are DPW workers, policemen, firemen, runs the whole gamut. So we come from a long line of serving. I sincerely respect this position that I'm being appointed to and the responsibility that comes along with it. I look forward to serving my colleagues, my coworkers, the residents, and the elected officials in providing the best service to the city. I save the best for last, and a big thank you to my parents, my children who can't be here, they live in Florida. My parents are here, my sisters are here, my nieces and nephew are here, and my boyfriend for their unending support of me and my career over the years, and for never making me feel bad when I say, "Sorry, I can't, I have to work. Sorry, I can't, I have a meeting." You guys are the best. I love you all, and if you'd like to leave, you may. Sorry, I can't, I have a meeting. Thank you.
So the rest of the consent agenda, I'm going to bundle, and do I have a motion to present the consent, move the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do you want to second?
Second.
All right. At this time, are there any one from the public who would like to comment on our consent All right. Anyone from council to comment on our consent agenda?
Sorry.
Councilwoman Cammelson, please.
Thank you, Council President. There was one regarding the volunteer appointments. Can we pull that or invoke separately on, on that? We discussed this in closed session. Do you remember what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
So can somebody walk me through the process?
So we could do that. The, the thing with the committees, just to be aware, if your vote, if you vote no means you vote no for everybody.
For the appointments.
All the appointments. And, because it, there, it's all or none for the appointments. So we can do that if you'd like. We can, of course, we can do that. But just so, if you're aware of the process, if, if for the voting, if you do vote no, it means you're voting against everyone in the list.
Okay. So it's just one, okay, so if I just have a problem with one specific appointment?
You can voice your concerns and then decide how you'd like to vote.
I see. Okay.
Okay. So would you like to do that?
I would. Yes.
We can pull number, we'll pull number four. Go on that separately.
That's the committee assignments. Number five is the council.
Oh, that, that's right. Yeah. The committee assignments, yeah.
So it's number five you want to comment on, the regular board appointments?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Okay. So that's that. So we'll do that one separately. Any other comments on the rest of the consent agenda from council?
If I may, Council President?
Yes, please, Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you. I'd like to make a comment on the, on item number two, the council rules for this year. The rules has proposed memorialize council's recent practice of having the public comment on proposed ordinances and resolutions before the council discussion of those. And in recent months, there have been more than one situation where a member of the public realized what the resolution was really going to do only during the council discussion, and by then it was too late for the public to comment. I had expressed my concern about this to you, and we agreed that when a council member introduces an ordinance or a resolution, that council members should fully explain it so that members of the public have sufficient context to understand what it's going to do and to formulate any comments they may have. And with that understanding, I can vote to support these rules.
Thank you. No, Claire and I sat down a couple of, last week, and we spoke about this, and I think it is right. If you look at the way ordinances or resolutions were introduced in the past, when the council person introducing it would give a pretty lengthy description of what the resolution or ordinance was, including talk about supporting documentation in the packet, somehow or the other, we've got, gotten away from that, and there's, it's, most ordinances and resolutions have been usually just introduced with the legal language, and then we come back and then we talk about a lot of the information that's there. And I think it's much better to, when we introduce these things, to give a full-blown assessment of what they are, so people understand what it is. And I think importantly, it will mean that we'll have a lot less questions about a lot of these things, because it'll be explained upfront. So happily for me, the meetings will go smoother and maybe a little quicker, as well as people are very informed about what we're actually voting on. So, so, so that's, I thought we agreed how we would address this. So we're going to keep the council, public comments around ordinances and resolutions first, but only after a very well-vetted descriptive introduction of the resolutions or the ordinances by the council person making the introduction. Thank you. Any other comments on the consent agenda? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consent agenda passes. Now let's, we'll go back to consent on Law and Labor Number Five, which is the established board committees. Councilman Palowski.
How thoroughly do I have to explain this?
Just, oh, what are we doing?
Why do you just do make a motion to?
Do you make a motion and introduce it?
Yeah.
Are you ready to?
This is Resolution ID Number 11518 to establish council board committee et cetera appointments. I move to introduce this resolution.
Uh, second? You just second?
Excellent, yeah, so this is what we spoke about, uh, on our appointments, um, that we talked about, uh, earlier. But yeah, so, uh, comments from the public? Comments from council?
Well, I mean, what are we actually talking about?
We're talking about this.
I mean, I understand, but.
We're talking about this, uh, uh, resolution.
Right, but what, does, well, does the public even know what to ask? Cause we, we don't know what the problem is.
There, we don't know that there is a problem.
Okay.
Well, you just asked, there was a motion, there was a request to pull it from the consent agenda, so we're doing it, and we're asking, uh, if there's any comments from council people. That's it.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
Councilwoman Callmanson.
Callmanson, thank you. Um, we talked a lot about this in closed session, and, um, civility has been a big thing for me. It's, it's something I campaigned on, it's something we've talked a lot about, and I just think that we need to, and this is specifically for one appointment, um, and I just think that we need to do more than just say that we wanna restore civility, I think we need to take some action, so that's my, that's my comment.
Thank you. Um, other comments from council? All right, uh, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Palowski.
Yeah, um, so, um, restoring civility, I don't think is done by, um, punishing somebody who passionately voices their feelings. I have voted for people on, last year, hypercritical of me, repeatedly telling me on social media that I'm unfit to lead. Why would I vote for them? Because they're passionate about the committee that we wanted to put them on, and the person who's gonna remain nameless that we're talking about here is very passionate about that committee, knowledgeable about that committee, and, um, I don't have any concerns whatsoever with, uh, that person being civil on her, uh, committee.
Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet.
I'd like to just second that, uh, what Councilman Palowski said. One of the things that I think a lot of people would find fascinating is some of the people that you would see, uh, us yelling back and forth from the dais, we're having really good meetings with a lot of these folks now, and really collectively making things happen, specifically Homeless Task Force, I give you multiple examples, and what I've learned is sometimes you just have to get into a room and get to know people, um, get to know about their families, and we've been able to do that this year with a lot of people uh, that maybe we disagreed with, and guess what? We probably didn't know them that well. So I think this is a real good opportunity sometimes for people who do disagree or don't get along to truly try to see their point of view. Um, as Councilman Palowski said, uh, they are passionate, and sometimes it's good to have people that disagree with you, and I've, I've learned my lesson on that a few times and come out on the other side, so I, I support this volunteer.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Boyer.
First of all, I just wanna apologize to David Dietz. Sorry, I had to, I had to talk, man, you know? No, real quick, I, we, we just discussed the public not understanding what we're talking about. No one has any clue what we're talking about right now. The public has no idea, they're home right now, listening to us, talk about some volun- volunteer, and someone doesn't think that they should be volunteering, and we don't know why, or what, or who, or when, or whatever, so, I mean, to be honest, I don't see the, I don't, do not see the point of this discussion because no one knows what we're talking about. I just wanna point that out. So unless we're gonna, like, discuss it, what is this? It's like a quagmire. Sorry, I just, I just had to point that out, cause I know somebody's watching at home saying, "What are they doing? What are they talking about?" Okay.
Fair enough. Other comments? Councilwoman Ha- uh, Callmanson.
Thank you. Um, some of those are, are false equivalents, this, this is an extreme situation, this is not somebody passionately disagreeing, and while nobody knows exactly who we're talking about, people will see, people will see all the appointments, and there will be some people that question the appointments, and I'm not saying I'm gonna vote no on this, and, but everybody knew, um, how I felt in closed session, so nobody should be surprised. Um, I told everybody how I felt about this, and I'll, I'll just leave it at that, this is, this is not somebody who just passionately disagrees. This is, um, th- this is clearly, or, I'm sorry, nobody's, nobody's, uh, knows exactly what I'm talking about, but this is over the line, but it's fine, we'll, we'll leave it at that.
I'm sorry, Council President, I just don't, I don't, uh, maybe, maybe I'm just, I don't.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I'm here and I didn't have this.
So, I'm just gonna, let's, I, I, I understand this, it, you know, I think what we're trying to do up here is be respectful of our volunteers. They do volunteer, and we should, uh, support and actually commend people for doing that, so there, there may be a difference of opinion, and I, and I respect Councilwoman Callmanson's, uh, willingness to be discreet around this because we do have differences of opinion sometimes, but that doesn't change the fact that these people do volunteer, and, um, you know, I, uh, as I mentioned earlier, volunteers are one of the amazing, things that make our community what it is. So, uh, you know, that's, that's, I, I apologize why this is so opaque, to use your word, Councilman Boyer. Um, it, it's difficult discussion to talk about, but, um, we talked about it. So, are there other comments from council? All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, that wraps up our, um, our, uh, agenda items. Uh, at this time, I'd like to open up the floor to public comments. This is your chance, anyone from the public like to comment? All right, uh, no public comments, we'll close public comment session of our meeting, and then move, uh, to our council member comments. Does any council member like to comment on something that they just feel like commenting on? Councilwoman Hamlet.
Uh, thank you, Council President, I just wanted to say how pleased, um, I was to support, uh, our business administrator, uh, Baldwin. Uh, I work with her on a daily basis, and I'm, I know I'm probably one of the ones that tortures her on a daily basis by asking her so many questions, um, but truly, uh, it is, it is an honor to, to be a part of this day, I, I look up to you, respect you, and, and as I told her, um, she, it became very evident, as, as our council president said, when we were interviewing and, and looking at candidates, that, that truly, uh, our answer was sitting right next to us all the time, and, uh, she was certainly, became our first selection, uh, very, very quickly. So, thank you for your leadership and your friendship and your guidance. And I think she is the first female city administrator of the City of Summit, which is, uh, very exciting.
There you go.
And I think, uh, I think it was four Democrats, and how many Republicans? I know I can't count, just, how many others, how many others are there? But, uh, unanimous bipartisan, uh, outgoing council members, uh, Vartan and Miniger, as well as the incoming, um, uh, council members, so thank you for that. Uh, I wanted to mention that I was asked to attend the 2025 Innovations and Solutions for Ending Unsheltered Homelessness uh, with the, um, Department of Community Affairs, uh, so I'll be attending with Mike Callis- uh, Mike, Mike Callahan. Uh, we will be attending a bipartisan roundtable um, to discuss ending homelessness, so I'm really excited to represent Summit in February out in Los Angeles, and I look forward to reporting back, uh, how we can, um, bring those solutions back to Summit. Uh, out of, we're already making a lot of progress, but I'm excited to go out there and, and learn more. Uh, tomorrow, we have a meeting with Union County, uh, with the county manager and, um, uh, Commissioner Marabella, so we're very excited about that, to talk about the Salt Brook. We also are meeting, uh, with other municipalities on Friday, uh, Berkeley Heights, New Providence, and an organization called Hoboken Strategies, Strategies, um, to discuss something that was recently passed by the House and the Senate, which is the Water Resources Development Act of 2024. Um, basically what the, uh, what this, uh, Development Act is, uh, it was passed recently, uh, many years ago, but there's always different iterations of it. And it will allow, hopefully, for studies in that Salt Brook area. Uh, as I've mentioned before, the Salt Brook is a stream in Summit that's become so deteriorated that individual homeowners can no longer fix their sections. Um, so it is a gray area because we certainly don't want municipalities, um, you know, fixing private property, um, but we really had to engage DEP's, Congressman Kane's office, Senator Bramnik's office. Um, our director, Aaron Schreger, and his team have been working this issue for a long time, but I feel like there's hope for these residents, and, uh, it's my goal for 2025 to hopefully, uh, get this ball across the goal line for these folks and, uh, and get something accomplished, otherwise I'm not sure what we're all sitting up here doing, uh, if we can fix problems, so I'm, I'm very excited about that and passionate, and I hope, hopefully, we have some good news in 2025. And congratulations to our latest, uh, council members for joining us here. We're super excited and, uh, and welcome.
Thank you. Other, uh, council comments? Councilman Palowski.
Thank you. Um, three things, congratulations, Tammy. So happy to have you. Um, congratulations to, um, our new council members, uh, Toth and Callmanson. We've already had several really good meetings and calls, and, um, as I discussed with, uh, Ms. Callmanson during one of them, we're probably gonna agree 99% of the time. We saw the 1% tonight, but. It's all good, and, uh, I look forward to working with you both for two years at least. And then, uh, Mayor Fagan mentioned helmets, and, um, every day I, I get emails about kids flying around town on their e-bikes with no helmets, and, um, you know, uh, I, I tell, uh, my son's in, uh, 10th grade, and I tell him and his friends all the time, "You gotta start wearing your helmets." So, we are looking to put together some kind of a, um, an education process, and, uh, we gotta talk to the chief still, but some kind of an enforcement initiative, and I think, um, I think the appropriate punishment is to walk your bike home if you don't have a helmet on. So, uh, we'll see about that, but we'll try and advertise it at the schools and, um, cause it is just a matter of time, so, that's all I have.
Thank you. Other comments?
Council President, just one.
Yes, please.
Uh, I just wanna remind the public that on January 27th, at 7:00 PM at the Summit Middle School, the, the department, the Department of Homeland Security will be coming in to do a No to Protect program presentation. Uh, this program is a national public awareness campaign launched by the Department of Homeland Security in April of 2024, aimed at preventing and combating online child sexual exploitation and abuse. Uh, this will focus on prevention, education, reporting, and support. I encourage everyone to come out to the middle school at 7:00 PM on that day, this is for adults, this is not for children, this is for parents. Uh, they will be going over some really detailed content. This is a serious public awareness event, and, uh, and I think it's very important in this day and age. So I'll, I'll be mentioning this at the next council meeting, uh, as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman, uh, Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. I would be remiss if, if I, if I didn't do this, so it's my three thoughts.
Make 'em quick.
First of all, Happy New Year to everyone, thank you very much for coming out, congratulations to our new council members. Um, I'm really, uh, that's number one. Excuse, number two, uh, I'm really looking forward to this new year. Uh, we do have some exciting new initiatives that, uh, we'd like to introduce and accomplish for this year, so, uh, please stay, stay tuned, and, uh, please join us at our council meetings. Uh, and number three, uh, former Councilman Vartan, congratulations on finally getting your well-deserved council chair. I knew, I knew you were very excited about getting that. And also, uh, Councilman Miniger, it was a pleasure working with you, uh, and correct, congratulations, uh, I, actually, I, I hope I, I hope the map is available when I, my term is end, available, cause that looks really cool.
Great, uh, other co- other comments, uh, from council?
I just have one quick one that I forgot, I'm sorry.
Please, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Because, I had a turn. Councilman Smallwood forgot to mention this, but I also wanted to say uh, thank you for your service, I know I spoke last meeting, but, um, thank you to both of you, um, Councilman Vartan and Miniger and your wives for your service to Summit. We very much appreciate it. Uh, the last thing I wanted to mention is the paddle courts are officially open, right, Mark? Are they officially open? Uh, they're officially open, they won't be painted probably properly until the spring, and we did get a verbal commitment today, which hopefully will be on a resolution in the next couple of weeks. Uh, hopefully, we're gonna have the owner of Xenon paddles, uh, donate some paddles, uh, to Summit so that when we do our clinics, and Mark is gonna call some of the local pros, uh, in the area who are willing to do that, uh, residents who wanna learn to play paddle, uh, we'll have paddles there, and, um, we should be able to get, hopefully Summit will have their first paddle teams maybe next year even, along with all the other communities in Summit, so we're, we're really excited for that, and we're really excited to bring the game to Summit and Summit residents who don't know how to play, doesn't matter, cause we have lots of pros around the area who can teach you, and, uh, we'll have paddles for you and everything, so it's very exciting, and, uh, just wanted to let you know about that.
Great, thank you. Other comments?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
So, I'd like to make one comment.
Second.
I get to make a comment? Come on. No, I just, uh, wanna again, say thank you for everyone coming. Uh, it's, this is a, a great event, um, but it, and it's supposed